Sounds good.
This has my notes in it. So I should probably get back to me after, but that was just.
This is the book that MASC gives us with like fifty pages of questions that you can ask. Yeah, and then there's like scenarios you can run. I mean, that was one of the things we talked about was like, maybe we give them a few scenarios to do rather than just like something like a like around two scenarios.
Kathy, did you?
I just highlighted that program.
Okay, I'll take a look. Thank you so much.
To be updated based on our title. Obviously.
All right, we should stop.
Very, very.
And Henry.
That's right. Oh, yeah. So my way.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, January sixth school committee meeting to order here at the Colbert School. Moving right into our agenda, public comments. I don't see anybody in the audience. Public comments, anybody online?
Hold on one second. We have one individual online, but they do not have their hand.
Okay, so we will move on to routine matters. Approval of minutes, December ninth and December sixteenth. Dr. Horak said she had a.
That's right. I had one request for a modification on the minutes or. Let me show you. I got this date correct. Number nine, Bella talked at length about lots of great programs that she was doing, and one of them was the Coalition for Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, and the date says that she'll be in DC from two, two twenty-five to two, twenty-six, twenty-five, but I didn't think she was going for twenty-four days. So I think that the date's probably incorrect, and I don't see Bella here, so. So request to change.
We can look online to see when that that meeting is.
I'm sorry, we can see what?
We can look online.
All right, well, we can make. Yeah, we can make modifications. Okay.
Great.
So we can hold off on approving those until we get the correct dates. And was that it for the?
That's all the recommended changes I have.
Are there any other changes or modifications from anyone else? Okay, so for the December sixteenth school committee meeting, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Horak. I missed the rule. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on.
Number nine, executive session.
Okay. December ninth, executive session. Oh, there's. This is December ninth, executive session and open meeting.
Can we make a motion to approve the minutes with that revision as noted by?
So moved.
All right, there you go.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And so are you suggesting that that we need to approve the December ninth as well, executive session?
The open session meeting minutes, we are making note of that.
One change. Yeah, yes. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Communications accommodations, Mr. Lee.
Madam Chairperson, in your packet you will find some information about some notable achievements. The first, which is we have a senior Dina Oliver Dadi, who has been nominated for the two thousand twenty-five US Presidential Scholars. You can see information that was sent from the mass government. She's being acknowledged for her achievement in the general category, recommended by the school and the Massachusetts Department of Education as one of the Massachusetts nominees. Next step of the process moves on to the United States Department of Education. We wish her the best in terms of perhaps becoming a presidential scholar. So kudos to you, babe. Also in the packet, you will find some information about our new state champions. This is a sport that does not participate under the MIAA, participates under the MSAA, but our esports team are state champions after hard work and dedication and teamwork. This new league and this new team, I'm sure have done a lot to get this off the ground, and our team are the state champions. So congratulations to them. In your packet as well, you will find some information about the Braintree High School adopted family. They donated nine thousand dollars to twelve Braintree High School families during the holiday season, which is incredible work on the part of our staff and our students to do that, and we appreciate their efforts. And then lastly, we also were able to donate sixty gift cards to Braintree High School, which came from St. Francis. For those of you who know Doreen Brides, with all her energy, she brought them to us and delivered them, and they were distributed. So we thank them for those contributions as well. That's what I have.
Want any comments or questions from the committee on accommodations and communication?
Presidential scholar is outstanding and really exciting.
It is exciting. Very smiling.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on to gifts to schools. All right, we have quite a list this evening. Branch Public Schools Music Department, one check in the amount of ten thousand dollars from the Randy C. Wolf Trust for the Braintree Public Schools Music Department to be used for the purpose of providing musical instruments and associated materials for the use of children in the public school system who are in financial need. As discussed with the Director of Music, the trust would like to allocate, sorry, would like to the allocation of the majority of the funds to go towards buying guitars for students that otherwise would not be able to participate in the music program. Braintree High School Athletic Gifts totaling five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, one deposit in the amount of nineteen fifty for the BHS Swim and Dive Team, one deposit in the amount of three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for the BHS Track Program, one check in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars from the Order of the Sons of Italy for the BHS Unified Team for uniforms, and one check in the amount of twenty, two hundred and fifty dollars from the Rotary, the Braintree Rotary for the BHS Dance Team. Braintree High School Decca Club Gifts to Schools totaling five thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents, oh, excuse me, five thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Two cash deposits in the amount of seven hundred dollars and three thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents for Decca. One check in the amount of a hundred dollars from Fuang Nguyen and Danika Do or Do, I apologize, for Decca. One check in the amount of a hundred dollars from Metropolitan Yacht Club for Decca, one check in the amount of five hundred dollars from the town of Braintree, and one check in the amount of a hundred dollars from Brabant and Huen LLP for Decca. Braintree Public Schools CPAC, one check in the amount of six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents from the Vote Yes for Braintree Override Committee for CPAC. Six checks totaling one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents from Bay State Textiles. East Middle School Gifts to Schools totaling six thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and eleven cents. Six deposits totaling that amount, forty dollars yearbook, three thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and two cents for East SAA General, seventeen hundred and twenty dollars Quebec trip, five hundred dollars East Theater Guild, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars Cougar Care, and five hundred and thirty-one dollars and nine cents, excuse me, for the DC tour. Flaherty Elementary School gift, excuse me, Gifts to Schools valued at three thousand dollars. Specialized Material valued at three thousand dollars for the Flaherty Programs for Students with Autism from the Elks National Foundation Gratitude Grant. The grants are provided to assist in areas of needs and local communities. Each grant has specific criteria, and this grant is to advance education and science. The Flaherty School became aware of this grant via a conversation with the Elks Exalted Ruler Lisa Scavo and Braintree resident Sunny Shaw. Those are all of the gifts for this evening. Do I have a motion to receive these gifts?
So moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Horak. A second by Mr. Rollo. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. I just have one quick question on the Flaherty. So who actually applied for the grant? Do we know?
I also do not know.
Okay. Curious. I appreciate Sunny Shaw and Lisa Scavo bring that to our attention, but I was just curious. Actually, one of the teachers did it. Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate that information. Okay, moving on to from the superintendent and staff. Back to you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have Dr. Scully here from Braintree High School. This is the time of year where we make updates to our program of studies. In your packet, you should have seen a one-pager that kind of highlights the changes that are being proposed, but Dr. Scully is here to walk you through them and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. As Mr. Lee mentioned, it's an annual tradition to come at this time and talk about changes to the program of studies. This year, the changes are limited. They're not as extensive as last year where we were introducing for this academic year, the two new pathways. But we've a couple here that I'll just explain briefly. The first one is really a renaming, but I just wanted to bring it to the group's attention. Our engineering class, our healthcare class, and our anatomy courses are all going to be retitled to reflect the adoption of the Project Lead the Way curriculum. So this is a national curriculum that we use. It's not just out of the box, but we use elements of it. We craft the courses ourselves. There are two benefits to this. One, we have access through Dr. Clifford and applying for grants to both resources and high-quality curriculum through Project Lead the Way. But also, all the courses are now coded by the DESE as advanced courses, which sort of, again, factors into our school accountability. We don't do it for that reason, but we will at least get credit for what I think is our very advanced curriculum in those areas. Specifically, the Project Lead the Way Human Body Systems, which is the new name for the Anatomy and Physiology course, is going to be the second course for the Healthcare Pathways cohort. So the group that is in Introduction to Healthcare this year will move to a specific section just for that group and get their anatomy course through that curriculum next year. The second item is Introduction to Business for Pathway Students. This is our Introduction to Business course that we started this year for the Business and Finance Pathway. Next year, we'll expand to a full-year course for the tenth graders entering into that. Presents some pressures on the on the curriculum, and we've been looking at that because we don't want to lose seats for electives by taking a course from the half year to the full year. That obviously affects some seats that are available. But we think that looking at student selections and sort of managing that, we were able to make that, expand that course for those students. Another one that really is kind of just a housekeeping issue, but I do want to bring it up just because of the great work that's being done with curriculum in this area. So our ELE English classes, and these are the classes that are not language acquisition, but stand for the actual English classes, like English nine, English ten, for students who are in the EL program. So based on where they are placed through a various number of tests, through the WIDA test, through the access test, students are placed in a specific English class, which presents sort of like a sheltered introduction to the topics of various literature-based topics, right? So setting, tone, theme, until their skills are such a, are at a point where they can then transition to their grade-level course. So we've renamed these courses, ELD English one and two, to reflect their sequential nature. So there's really no change to curriculum here. They had previous names intensive and strategic, but it reflects a little bit more the sequencing going on in that department. And then a couple of details, which for the Achieve and Alliance Programs, these are two specialized programs at the high school, and these courses aren't even teased out in the program of studies per se. The programs are. But in these programs, you know, special services are incredibly nimble in designing curriculum to be appropriate for the students who are in front of them. And so they do a lot of changes all the time based on the needs of the students. But a couple that I thought were worth bringing forward is these programs are going to extend a Learning Strategies class. So they have a Learning Strategies nine, which was new, and we're going to extend that into tenth grade. They're going to add a College and Career Readiness Course for eleventh and twelfth graders. So now, if you picture the student who goes through all four years, which is not the case for most students, but the hypothetical student who would, they have some learning strategies, nine and ten, and then eleven, twelve, they have a course that really starts to think about transition. And then also, I thought this was worth noting, is that they're going to implement a chemistry class for tenth graders to match the general BHS sequence. And that is, at least in part, it was something, it was moved that the program was looking to make so that they can match the general sequence of courses at the high school. But the change in the MCAS requirement certainly makes that a little bit easier now because there was a desire to give students as many opportunities to pass that test as possible. They're still going to be prepared, but now they're going to have a chance to prepare in biology, chemistry, and physics in the same as the mainstream sequence of courses. And then finally, the last one, which probably seems a little confusing all by itself. So CP pre-calculus has been re-leveled as honors pre-calculus to reflect the rigor of the course. So this comes out of a result of a conversation with Ms. Miller and Mr. Garofalo about what students are actually taking that course. By the time students are seniors, they have a, they have a wide variety of math courses that they can take. We started to think about this because College Board is offering a new AP course called AP Pre-Cout. And we've looked at it, and we do not think it's appropriate for the school at this time, but it also, for a variety of reasons, I could discuss if anybody's interested, but we also looked at what students were actually doing in the pre-calculus course and realized that the course was not appropriately leveled. It was sort of, students are taking, are studying math at a high level, and we thought it was appropriate to re-level that as an honors course. So there's no real changes, a few modifications year to year in the curriculum. There's no big change to the curriculum that's really a re-leveling to make sure that it's appropriately leveled relative to other courses that seniors take. And then the the next sentence, the caveat is always, I've been looking at the program of studies for seven years in a row right now, and even this afternoon, as Mr. Garofalo and I were looking at it, I said, how did I not notice that misspelling for seven times in a row? So we always find something that we need to clarify or edit throughout the document.
Okay, Miss Tophie.
So what's the CP pre-calculus? Did it have a good enrollment or was?
It has, it runs one or two sections, so it's not a large enrollment, but it's a steady enrollment. And what we find is that it's oftentimes students who, you know, probably have taken math at the honors level. They haven't pursued sort of the Advanced Placement Calculus track. But the reason they want to take pre-cout as opposed to statistics in their senior year is often because they're headed to a medical field, and that course is more useful both in admissions and in what they need to know in college. So it's a, it's kind of a niche track for students, but we thought it was a.
Yeah, so I gave Mr. Dr. Scully a list of the small changes that I, and typos that I noted when I read through. But the thing that stood out to me was that the competency determination graduation requirement hasn't been updated to reflect the change in MCAS, that MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement. So that I would like to see that updated before we vote on this. Also, on page eight, the Mark Waiting System chart has, still has level four in it, and I don't believe there are, are there any level four classes?
So level four has been a topic of some discussion that sort of we've come forward and asked to formally eliminate it. We have courses that may be listed as level four, but in reality, they're not running just because of where students are recommended or placed. So, so there may be, I know that it's in the Mark Waiting chart, the Mark Waiting chart. I could double-check on levels of instruction. That does seem to be inconsistent.
Are there children and students in level three classes that are designated as level four in that class?
No. In other words, like sort of two levels in one course? No.
Okay.
Could I just respond to the competency determination? After the vote, the Department of Education has put out multiple guidances about how to pursue things. We got the last one right before the holiday break, so we will have it on the January fourteenth Policy Subcommittee Meeting, and it is a localized decision, so ultimately, this body will have to make a decision about what our competency determination will look like. So we'll be in a position to begin that conversation on the fourth.
Well, it seems as if we require a rigorous level of courses in order to graduate already, whereas we don't just go by the Massachusetts standard that you have to pass PE, right? So.
One of the things that we'd like to do is, because I did, you know, the memo was written up before the the further guidance that Mr. Lee mentioned, but we've looked at some, we've looked at some language for that section, so this, I don't have the page in front of me, but there's about five sections that it says this is what you need to do to graduate. One of wicked enough with competency determination in reference to MCAT. We'd like to describe it just in reference to competency determination is as determined by the school committee, because this group may approve something right now, since we're facing a bit of a time crunch, and then come back and want to change it as we go. We do have a couple of different ideas. We've, we've talked to other schools, the principals of the South Shore principals. We're discussing different approaches to it. So we'd like to put some language that sort of indicates that that decision comes from here, whether or not we tease it out. I don't know that it matters that much. It's up to this group.
My, my final comment is, again, on acronyms. Under the course listings, it says like SE, four A and four B, and unless you read really carefully the first page, you wouldn't remember that those, that stands for school-wide expectations. I didn't, and I read, I read through the whole thing. And also, under support systems, instead of just referring to Expectations one and five, say what, say what they are. So I, I education is rife with acronyms, and sometimes they can confuse non-education. So since parents and students will be looking at this, I think they need to be written out. That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments from?
I said a question just about the competency requirement that might place the MCAS. What other kind of competency requirement could there be other than just passing acquired courses? Just trying to.
There are actually several options. It, it doesn't prohibit us from using the MCAS scores. So in theory, we could maintain an MCAS score that we say is necessary to meet the Braintree competency determination. So there are many options that we could explore. The conversation that will begin in policy, I think, really does relate to what are our current graduation requirements? What does our overall curriculum look like when you compare it to other school districts across the state? What do we align with in terms of state frameworks? And do we feel confident in what we're presenting is enough to say the student who's passed all these courses and all these requirements has met the competency determination? You know, preview, I'm going to be suggesting we should go down that path, but it's a conversation will begin on the fourteenth.
When you say go down that path, you mean like down the path of? I'm not sure I followed that.
Well, for instance, I would not recommend to this body using MCAS scores moving forward as a competency determiner. So although it's a possibility, I would not recommend it. So I, I think we have a very rigorous program at the high school. I think we have excellent students who achieve great things in our classrooms. And I think for those students who go through and experience the program that we delineate as necessary and do it successfully, is a good argument to be made that's met that competency determination. That's a decision for this body and a conversation for the fourteen.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Dr. Horak.
Thanks for coming today, Dr. Scully. Start with an easy one. I noticed that in the program of studies, the verbiage of parents is used a lot, but in a lot of our other official documentations, we use parents or guardians. Would that be an appropriate change to make?
I just take a look at that. We try to use families in some places as well.
That would be great, too.
Yep.
Yeah. And then I wondered about, this is very minor, I understand, but the table of contents was in an alphabetical order, like you might expect in an index at the back of a thing. And I was wondering, would it make more sense to put it in a numerical order like you might see in a typical table of contents?
And thus making an actual table of contents. Yeah, that's, that was gently, but yes. We could, I mean, I think sort of the reason that is like that is simply because it's revised every year so that sort of the page numbers change, and we figure using the document, there's a need for an index to be able to look up topics quickly, and then also sort of an item going back. It could be that the answer might be just to have an index, like use it as an index, put it at the end.
It could be a both and.
Yeah, it could be for, I'll, I'll take a look at and look at it with Mr. Garofalo and see if there's a way we can either simplify or make it more straightforward.
I just had, yeah, I just had that thinking because we're setting a model for our students of how official documents are organized, and I just think table of contents or page order and index are alphabetical. And my next question is a little bit deeper and a little bit different. I wonder about study halls and the frequency with which students are in study halls these days because they may not be able to take a course because of perhaps limited course offerings. I don't have students in high school, so I'll preface it with, I don't know. I'm just curious to know about the situation right now and how often students have to do a study hall because they may not be an option for them.
So students would be in a study hall usually for two reasons. One, we have study halls that run across from students' phys ed courses or is it slash lab for a few students, phys ed slash health for students. Phys ed and the other courses that I mentioned wouldn't meet six days out of the seven-day cycle with one being dropped, so they have some spots where to keep that as a less-than-full course, they'll have some study halls. Those usually, you know, amount to just a couple of periods out of the full cycle. The other one would be where a student just doesn't have a course scheduled. We find that for some students, you know, when they get to eleventh and twelfth grade, there are some students who, for whom that might be appropriate. You know, the student who, I won't ask everybody's schedule, but for students who have two or three or sometimes four or all AP courses, some find like a rotating block where they can stop, go to the media center, sort of get their head on straight, think about what's going on in the day is helpful. I will say, though, that each year we do have, we have fewer now because the school is slightly smaller, but you know, each year we have many students who have a study simply because they were not able to be placed into a course. I would love to eliminate those. That becomes a bit of a math problem where it's a question of available seats and courses and available instructors and, and students who are in the school at that time. So that's kind of a broad answer. I don't know if I quite got it, what you were asking, but of those three types, the first two, I think are reasonable. The third is, I don't think we would design it that way, but that's sort of a function of where we're at right now.
I agree. The first two types, very reasonable. You can understand students with a very heavy course load, especially taking APs, might want a study hall in case they, if they're on track to graduate with all of their requirements. And I, I just worry that, I want to be sure that we're keeping our students on track to graduate and that there's enough courses and availability for them to take and not forced into a study hall, if at all possible.
I do feel confident about that, and we've, when we, we made a change to the number of overall credits required to graduate when we made an adjustment to science labs a couple of years back. So I do think that the number that we have is, is achievable by all students without any extraordinary measures. I do think sort of, like I said, under different schedule, under a different size of school or staffing levels, you know, even with phys ed, there are some schools, I don't know that I would recommend this right now, but there are some schools that run it as a full course, either for a semester or infrequently for full year, like a quarter. That means the student's in there every day. But that also means that ninety days for an hour a day, they're in phys ed, which might be a little bit more dosage than we need, depending on the subject or the curriculum.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there a comment just about formatting of the document? My suggestion is to have the pagination, the start of the cover page be page one, because most people read the document as a PDF, so they're, that way the page in the PDF file matches the pagination in the document. I think it could be.
So when you scroll down the side?
Right, so it's identical. So like page one of the document in, in terms of the page numbers at the bottom of the page is the same as page one of the PDF. So instead of having Roman numerals. So instead of having Roman numerals.
Anything else? All right, so this is the first reading. Obviously, there's been some feedback.
I would like, when, before we vote on, can you redline copy with our copy that has pages that we're not, when you were looking at last year's and just, I probably would like to see that the changes have been made before I vote on anything.
Is that difficult to do?
No, it's a little bit hard to give sort of a redline one, but I can give an updated one because we're in
Yeah, an updated.
Generally used schools will
Would be fun.
Documents with that, but we can give an updated one.
And just back to the table of contents and index and all that, like every time you could change to this. You know, if you remove something or add something, you know, is it, you're not repaging and everything, right? Are you, are you removing sections and leaving the section like intentionally blank? Like, how are you managing this for the table of contents and all that?
Well, without getting into too much detail, sort of, I was, so I'm taking a look at it this afternoon, for instance. And so if you have, for instance, English begins at close to the top of a page. And the page previous ends very close to the end of the page. So I've put in a page break in there for a good top format.
I mean, it's all right. It's tedious.
So if we make changes to those first eight pages, all we have to do is change it by three or four, three, four lines, and then we spill over to the next page. So now English goes because there's a page skip and went to the next one. All of these are formidable. It's not, it's.
I'm not, just, yeah, I'm just, it's just, it's a lot of work in reconfiguring and all that.
There's some, yeah, there's some layout work that's involved, but that's, we want the document to look good, so we're no problem with that.
Great. Any other comments, questions? So again, this is the first read, our first reading. There's been some requests for some changes. Our next meeting is on the 27th. Is that enough time for you to?
We usually go to, well, I guess it's twofold. I can hear Mr. Garofalo's voice.
Do you have a deadline, is that?
Tomorrow, but.
It's a deadline.
At the very least, we'd like to be able to use, or even if we could just get authority to go ahead and use the last selection pages, which are at the end, which I don't think any of the other notes are sort of approaching that, which is here are the classes ninth graders can take, here what 10th graders take, because we use those for scheduling. So we want to be able to get those in the hands of guidance counselors and.
Next year, because we're, that's starting.
That's, oh, it's, it'll start soon as we finish exam. So it's 27th of Monday?
Yeah.
It would start the 28th, I guess. Sort of at the very least, the first week of February, we tend to have assemblies and sort of introduce students to that.
Good work.
All right, so we'll do a final on the 27th.
And I can send a version for.
Time so we can look at it.
Well in time.
Okay, that works. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Back to you.
Thank you. Also in your packet, this is an annual event for us, is a listing of the winter coaches. Winter sports teams are up and running. Every year, we provide the school committee with a list of those coaches for your acknowledgement. Does not require you to approve it, but it does, we've done a vote of acknowledgement every year for the coaches that we have. So I don't know if there are any questions about any coaches.
There were some, a couple of TBDs or NAs or any, does diversity gymnastics, is that vacant? Anything that are NAs? Everything full is basically my question. Is there anything pending?
I would assume some of the assistant coaches, if we can identify candidates, we might add positions back in. But otherwise, I think this list is fairly concrete. I think, you know, our staffing is good, our teams are doing well, and the pleasure of attending a hockey game over the weekend. So we're up in there.
Any questions on the list? And I have a motion to acknowledge.
Motion to acknowledge the winter coaches.
I have a motion to acknowledge.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Tuffy, favor.
Aye.
Excellent. Good luck for the winter season.
Thank you very much. And also in your packet, you will find for a first reading, a draft calendar for next year. No major changes in terms of the overall format of it. Holiday break is almost the exact opposite of what we had this year. So rather than the first week completely off, it's the second week that's completely off. You can see the shaded blue, the half days. Without any snow, our last day would be on the 17th of June. But again, happy to answer any questions. This is certainly a first reading.
Ms. Tuffy.
So when is this due? When do, when do you need this?
Well, we like to get it out to families as soon as we can, just because they have to plan their own lives for next year.
January is usually.
This is the time of year that we typically do it.
So I ask because we are going to need to update both the superintendent, which will change for 20 in September.
Yeah, well.
It won't change the dates. That's administrative.
So when we don't know what schools
Correct.
will be open. So we will need to update that.
So we, administration and school committee, we, in the past, we change on.
It all the time, yeah.
The changes have occurred. It's obviously very, much less common with the actual schools themselves, but it's the calendar itself in play. So everything else we can modify in the moment. It gets updated on our website. Marian does a great job at doing that. So the types of changes that you were discussing are not contingent upon the dates below.
Okay, thank you.
And we've, we've had a calendar and then have changed it periodically in subsequent meetings if something changes. Any questions about the calendar?
Could we move this to approval tonight? I mean, this is effectively identical to last year, the Thursday PD days and half days, right? Like, there's no mass.
There's no major changes. You know, the structure of the year is exactly the same.
Yeah.
I would, I, if you're going to approve it, I would approve it pending those, those changes when we, when we have that information.
I would, I would vote it as it is today.
Yeah.
And then we will come back and amend it when those changes are known. That's what we typically do.
I mean, are we even, we're not even, we're voting on the second half of this document.
Voting on the dates.
It's the first.
Voting on the calendar.
Really a directory.
Correct.
So.
We're voting on the calendar, the dates, so that people can plan. I've already had people reaching out to me asking, where's the calendar, where's the calendar?
I want to book my trip, go to Cancun next year.
I mean, I would make a motion to approve calendar as it's right now.
I have a motion by Mr. Rolo to accept the calendar as it is. And again, we can go back and edit.
I do have a question.
Oh, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
You mentioned there was a change toward the vacation week. Can you just clarify that?
Yeah, sure. So if you, if you look on this calendar, right? Our last day of school, half day is on the 23rd. This year, we didn't come back on what would have been Monday, the 22nd. We took that whole week off. Okay, next year, because the, the calendar moves a day. We're coming back to school on Monday, half a day on Tuesday. But if you look in the second week, the 29th through the 2nd, we're not in school. Whereas this year, we came back on Thursday, the 2nd.
You're referring to after the, the holiday, the winter break?
Yep.
Okay.
That's just flopped, the half week is the half just flopped.
Right.
You got it? Is that clear?
Yeah.
So it's just a function of the different.
It's where the, where the holiday falls.
Where the holiday falls. Dr. Horek.
This is minor on the integrated preschool where it says full day preschool. There's a, there's no space between the colon and the 7:50 AM. So it, it reads funny to me when I look at it. So in both columns, full day preschool, under regular school hours and early release, separate that colon and seven.
Sure. Yep.
My only comment.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion by Mr. Rolo to accept this as it is. And again, to Ms. Tuffy's point, we'll come back and, and modify the information on the top as it becomes available. I have a motion by Mr. Rolo.
Second.
Second by Dr. Horek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Bring it to the administrative updates.
Just to bring the committee up to speed in terms of our work with AppGeo and timelines. Up on the screen, you can see, we began working with AppGeo on October 3rd of 2024. Just now it seems like a long time ago. We put out messages to the community on October 21st, letting them know the work is about to begin. Since the work has began, we've had three working group meetings on October 29th, November 14th, and December 2nd. We've also had three advisory group meetings on 10/21, 18 and 12/16. We put out via parent square a survey to the school community about what priorities we should be focusing on. That should guide the work that went out on November 18th of 2024. And then once all the results were tabulated, we sent those results back out via parent square to the school committee on December 10th of 2024. As you may have seen on Friday, we put out a message to the school community about the community forums that will be held on January 21st, which is a Tuesday. That particular session will be in person at East Middle School. And then on Wednesday, January 22nd, there will be a virtual opportunity, exact same information for folks to attend if they wish. But we'll be covering at those community meetings as an introduction to the present conditions within the district that provide context for the work. Like, why do we need to even have these conversations? AppGeo will then present who they are and the work that they perform. They will present a number of scenarios that have been discussed by the working group and the advisory groups. And then we will be soliciting feedback from those members that attended so that we can allow AppGeo more information to refine any potential recommendations they might make when they come forward to the school committee. It is our intention to have them come and present their findings to the school committee on February 10th, but certainly no later than the end of February. After that is done, the ball truly shifts into the school committee's court. AppGeo, my office has no decision-making capacity here. It is a school committee that will make the final determination about what will or will not be done with the recommendations that AppGeo might make. And it'll be whatever process the school committee chooses in terms of how they solicit community feedback at that point in time. So even from the word go, this was the timeline that AppGeo had initially put together. Data gathering and background analysis began in October. Building and revising scenarios, many of which you'll see on the January 21st and 22nd days. They've been working on since that point in time, beginning in November. Again, the community forums are this month and then it will come to the school committee with any finalized scenarios that they think you should entertain, and then you folks take it from there. So that is the process that has been undertaken thus far. We again put out a parent square on Friday. We will begin putting them out weekly right up until the community forums with more information about what to expect. We want to manage expectations for people coming and we'll market it as well as we can up to and including the pink and blue week. So I don't know if anybody had any questions.
I just want to add a few things. If we can go back one slide. So the, the, the forums on the 21st and 22nd, those are presentations. They're not going to be Q and A's for people to ask questions. It's Sanborn is going to present with the work. Mr. Lee is going to talk about how we got here. And then they're going to talk about the work that's been done to date. After those, both of those meetings are going to be recorded and we expect to send out anything that's been discussed in those meetings, any, you know, PowerPoint presentations, whatever they put together, to send those out if people want or interested in those as well. So that they'll have what was discussed and they'll have the recordings. We also want to come up with some kind of form to receive feedback back. And we were talking about doing a QR code as well. So the people, if they watch it, they attend, whatever, they have questions, they can send in the questions using that form. So that, that is for us to get more feedback from the community through the 21st and 22nd meeting. And then what I envision is if, if we can gather all that information and, and they can present to us on February 10th or sometime in February, the next step for us as a school committee would be to have a public hearing. And let people come and give us, you know, based on, based on whatever the recommendations that Sanborn makes. Because for the 21st and 22nd, there is no decision. There are a bunch of ideas or a bunch of scenarios they're going to go through and they're going to give us like how we got here. And then when they actually give us the recommendations, that's when we want to reach out to the community and do a public hearing so that people can actually come. The people that are impacted, if it includes school, school closures, whatever those final scenarios are. We want to give people an opportunity to chime in and to give us their feedback. And then my, my expectation or anticipation, and again, it's up to the, the full committee, is that we vote sometime in March. So with that, are there any other questions or? Ms. Rolo.
So this says recommendation to school committee by end of February. And we push Sanborn to try to give whatever recommendations are going to the school committee before the 10th. So that we're, so we can get their recommendations on that, the February 10th meeting.
They got to present.
We're shooting for the 10th.
Right.
Because in absence of that, it pushes the timeline out a lot further. And I think the goal would be that everybody in the community knows exactly what's happening as soon as we possibly can roll out.
Absolutely, yep.
Great.
I agree.
There's no questions. About the, the public forums on the 21st. So how is Sanborn going to get, if people are going to use a QR code to like provide information and ask questions? Is Sanborn going to respond to the questions?
We're going to gather the answers to all the questions and public, and public, publish that as well.
We'll put out a response, frequently asked questions, responses.
Yeah.
To, you know, it'll come out of here only because we can use parent square. I mean, what is most critical is to get whatever feedback is needed to AppGeo so that they can refine their work. And then answering questions is just a precursor to the public hearings and things of that nature. So we'll get the answers to any questions that come in as quickly as we can. And we'll send them to everybody. So here was the question, here was the answer, as opposed to you have a question, I gave you the answer, but nobody else got that.
Want everyone to get all the information.
You get it.
And I know that at the last school committee meeting, we talked about like, how can the public at large be notified about it? About the public hearings, because the parent square, of course, only goes to parents. So I think you mentioned that you were going to possibly talk to town hall about other ways that can be. Because I feel like there's other stakeholders out there, you know, people who have kids in preschool, you know, property owners and, and who might be, who would have an interest in what's going on.
So a quick follow up. I mean, that'll be discussed in a school committee meeting, which gets blasted on the town website anyway. So we're going to be, it sounds like we're going to be presenting the information on the 10th. I mean, I would potentially rename them not, they're not really forums, they're more of a community presentation.
It's a presentation.
The forum kind of makes it seem like there is a back and forth. And I think it would be a presentation which would set the right expectations out of the jump. That would be my own like kind of feedback.
I would agree. Yeah, because there's no Q and A. I don't want people to think that they can come and ask questions based on the presentation because we'll be there. You know, for hours and other people might have the same question. So if we can gather it all and then again, answer those questions on FAQ.
Certainly there's be the ability for them to ask questions.
Yes.
Right, albeit in an electronic format and we'll give answers. It's far more efficient if we collect all the questions and pump out the answers to everybody.
Right. Any other questions or comments from the committee on the process?
So the community forum, now the community presentation. They, am I correct that they are open meetings and all school committee members will be in attendance?
Where if you're all in.
Are allowed.
If you, you're certainly allowed. If you're all going to be in attendance, we'll post it. Anytime you guys gather as a group, we posted it as a meeting, just to make sure we're not violating any open meeting law. It is an open meeting. You're all more than welcome to come. All we need to know is if you are all coming, we're just going to post it just to be safe.
I would prefer that.
I agree. I'll be there.
All right, so we should post them. Follow up, Ms. Bogaty.
I do, I do think that there should be Q and A after the meetings. I know that there's time limitations, but I think that that would be better. Just to give people an opportunity to ask live questions and get, you know, immediate answers and have sort of a discussion. And, and I do think that it should be somehow, notice should be provided to the, you know, the town at large as opposed to just parents. And, and my other, my other question was, I mean, as far as like the, the working group, can you talk about like what the advisory group? as far as like the the working group and can you talk about like what the advisory, the advisory group, the working group, what are those? Groups, you kind of, what was their role in the in the process?
Well, the working group are all members of of this office or administration in the district that gathered the information that app Gio said they needed in order to do their work. So with me, they tell us what they wanted, we go back and collect it, give it to them so that they could do their iterations and and create scenarios. The advisory group really took, you know, as you well know.
Yes.
You know, sat and and looked at some of the scenarios that are coming up so that we can get feedback from people who aren't just working in the central office in terms of what are we missing, what perspective is is absent here? And what other information do we need to bring to bear in terms of formulating these ideas? So those are the two roles. So the the working group consisted of five people basically within this office.
Okay. Data gathers.
Yeah. Undergathers, yeah.
Together.
On the data.
When you present, when they present at the community forums and you share information on parent square, are you going to share the names of the people that were in the advisory group and the working group?
We can, you know, they're, both those groups are analogous to so many meetings that we have internally. Where we're thinking about doing something and we would want to collect all their opinions, right? You know, I'm sure you've done it yourself, you know, you don't go into anything thinking we have all the answers. So, you know, I call in Ruby and I call in Mr. Seger and say, what do you guys think? So, you know.
One of the things that.
They don't drive the conversation.
Finish please.
One of the things we liked about app Gio was the level of transparency. And I have looked at other school systems. They have, they had like websites. So are they going to prepare a website for an interactive website for parents to to see how their child would be impacted by any of the redistricting?
We have to get to that place because they're, they're going to come on the 10th ideally and make some recommendations. And this group is going to begin to deliberate and vet what is in front of you. And you have to, as a group, make a decision and you have to say yes or no to some scenario. And then based on what that is, then yes, you can begin to break it down street by street, kid by kid and say, this is what's going to happen to your particular child. But absent that decision, we couldn't get a clear answer to anybody.
So for example, in Plymouth, they had three different scenarios and you and you clicked on the different scenario and put in your address and you saw where, what school your child would be going to and whether in stats on that school, how they'd be impacted. Are they going to do that for brain tree?
We're not there with them yet. I don't know them to bring three. What if they bring one? What if they bring two? Like, we're not there yet. This whole community forum, it's moving from a concept to a recommendation. So right now it's still conceptual. When you get to a point where you say, you know what, this group thinks that this idea is a good one, it should be shared with the school committee. For them to go through, you know, your work is representative of the entire community. When you get to a place where you begin to hone in on one or two scenarios, you can do the type of work that you just described. There's seven scenarios that are going to be presented at these presentations. They're not going to make a website for seven possibilities, some of which have multiple options to them as you present them.
My, so just to follow up on Mr. Tuffy saying, so from the February, when they actually present scenario, a scenario, scenarios, whatever it ends up being, between that time and when we have our public hearing, will we be able to tell people this is how it's impacting you?
I'll make sure that we can. Depends on when you hold a public hearing to be won.
Okay.
If you hold it within three days, it might be tough.
In March, I mean, I imagine.
I think if we had adequate time, we could do something very similar.
So if we pick, if it's multiple scenarios, just, I don't know, if it's this scenario, this is how these streets will be impacted. If it's this scenario, these are how these people and these families or students will be impacted. Between the time that we get the scenarios and the time that we have that public hearing. So people, because people might be just coming to that, how does this affect me? We, we should be able to give them that information before we have that public hearing.
And I think that will answer some of the questions that you're going to get as a result of those forums, if they present, if they present scenarios, they're going to know how is that going to impact their child. Also, I mean, the superintendent search committee, you have a link on the school department website and and with and it brought with a a level of transparency that that is not here yet with this. And I think people are extremely anxious about it. They need to have information. They.
So you asking for the advisory group and the working group names to be published, is that your question?
I, I am asking for on the school department website or on a website link to app Gio to have the advisory group members named, the scenarios listed and.
We don't have the scenarios yet. That's what I'm just saying, as of February 10th, when we have the scenarios, we could publish that information and let people know exactly how they're going to be impacted before we have a public hearing.
So we have, we have, don't we have, don't we have? We, there, don't we have possibilities going into this January 21st meeting? They have, I'm sure they have narrowed down some of these scenarios. I, I just think that that we need to give people as much notice as possible. So they will, because it is a very hard, hard thing to
Absolutely.
change schools for elementary students and parents.
No question.
I, I knew when I bought my house that I live in now, I made sure I bought a house that was in the same elementary school district. So, so my kids didn't have to change schools. So I, I just feel that we have to work very hard to make this clear and the information easy to find for parents.
Mr. Roll.
When they bring it to the school committee, they are going to tear down the initial version of the recommendation. So to me, it would be frankly, a little reckless to throw seven scenarios out, four of which, five of which, whatever, might never make it to the light of day. Where you then get people worried about what might happen when they're never going to get to school committee. So I think really at the time it hits school committee, you start to publish these, you start to show what individual addresses. And rather than completely panic everybody with seven things that may or may not happen.
Right.
You would want to narrow those options down before you're publicly publishing all of this stuff.
They have seven options or are they?
They have more than that. We, you know, we bring seven just because at some point, what we promised the community was you'd have a moment to give us feedback in terms of where we are. This is the moment. And then they take that information back and refine whatever work they've been doing based on the feedback that they receive in the community. If if you put seven scenarios and say, here are your seven scenarios, my first question as a community member was, where was my opportunity to speak to this? Right? So the idea is to get all this information, do all the work, refine it, bring it to the school committee in a format that says, we think this could work. Because when we talk about the seven scenarios, a cursory look at some of them, you should say to yourself, that would not work. So to bring, it's Mr. Roll's point, to create chaos and panic when you know it's never going to see the light of day is reckless.
So.
Feedback is.
Please finish, please.
Because we promised them that opportunity.
So you're saying that after February 10th, we'll narrow, they'll have narrowed down those seven.
Correct.
And, and at that point, are we going to publish those on a website?
We can't if that's where you want them. We're going to send everything out to people, right? So you, to go to the website is an active piece of work. To receive an email from us with all of it attached is passive. We can get more things to people passively than we can active ones.
Right.
Should be both because as Mr. Bogaty said, not everybody has access to parent square. They might have a child still in preschool or private school. They might be a business owner. So I, I think that we need to be very transparent and very clear and make this as interactive as possible for parents.
Are you, are you back to the presentations? Are you, are you talking about from February 10th, whatever the final scenarios that they, that they move forward to us?
So.
The whole process?
I, I'm talking about February 10th, when you have, when they've narrowed down those.
Scenarios.
Scenarios.
Yeah.
That it, it needs to be published, it needs to be public. And it should be accessible to everybody in the community, not just to the people who have access to parent square. And it should be interactive.
We can talk to Sanborn about how to make it interactive. Mr. Fogarty for the fourth time.
Sorry. So I, I just, I don't think, I, I sort of disagree with the the concern about chaos and panic. Think that, you know, I, I want people to be engaged and to have as much information as possible. I mean, are, we shouldn't be worried about our constituents having too much information that in thinking that they're not going to be able to handle it. Like our, you know, constituents should, should be treated like, you know, adults who can handle the information. I'm not worried about chaos and panic. I say, give the, give the work product of Sanborn and show the scenarios they.
I think they're going to get that at the 21st and the 22nd.
You don't run off with every half baked idea that we haven't shared with everybody because we know it's not good. We wait till we have something we believe in before we present it to people. And then just as often as they like it, they dislike it and and that's the conversation. That's the meat of of the process. Again, just creating ideas is is easy and you should do it as often as you can and create as many options as you can. But you very quickly have to be able to discern what is a good idea and what is not a good idea. And to share out bad ideas does no benefit to anyone.
I, I see you, if I can respond, I, I see you, I understand what you're saying. I, I just, I think that for this, to have a buy-in from the public, I, I want the public to be able to understand Sanborn's thought process and analysis of how they get from this, the beginning to the end, whatever their final proposals are. And so that requires a certain amount of transparency as to what different scenarios Sanborn looked at and and how they.
Which is what they're going to do.
First.
That's what they're going to present on the 21st.
Are you, we go toward the virtual meeting on the.
They are both recorded and anything that's shared at those meetings will be published.
So that, so at that point, you'll, people will know the seven scenarios.
Correct.
And, and.
And, and we will gather feedback from, from the community. And then they will refine down to whatever recommendations they're going to make to the school committee in February.
It's posted as a school committee.
And it'll be posted as a school committee meeting, that'll be recorded, they'll present to us why they think the, the scenario or scenarios, whatever they end up presenting are the right ones. And then again, we will have a public hearing, we will communicate how it affects people in, they infect, affect people. Those specific scenarios that we will be voting on will go out to, to, so people will know how it affects them individually. And then we will have a public hearing to get feedback for, back from those folks. Because I'm sure those are the folks that'll come to the public hearing and explain why this is a good or bad, you know, decision for the school committee. But ultimately, in the end, we make the decision. I, I know obviously we want to hear from the community, this is, this is, you know, redistricting is a dirty word and I, and I understand, you know, that this is going to be very difficult for, for people if we decide to, you know, redistrict if, you know, I know we've been talking about consolidating schools potentially as well. This is, and this is going to be a very difficult decision for all of us. So I'm not taking that lightly. I don't think any of us are taking that lightly. And again, through the process we just outlined, I think there's ample opportunity for people to, to share their views or ask their questions. And then we'll communicate answers back and we will listen to them in a public hearing. But again, we, we need to move this process forward. Mr. Fogarty.
At the very least, but but Sanborn, the Sanborn representative will answer our questions on the 10th, if that's the data.
Certainly. Absolutely. They will be presenting to us, yes, and telling us why those scenarios is a scenario or scenario. And then we as a body will obviously be asking questions, yes, as to why and drill down. And I'm sure we'll have questions for the superintendent as well, as how it'll impact. Anything else? Any further?
I have one final thing to say, and that is, that is with the passing of Fred Hanson, there has been no reporting about, about the independent search and Patriot ledger, there has been no reporting about redistricting in the Patriot ledger and it is, his work.
Is sorely missed.
Is really missed because that was how a lot of people got their information about what was happening at school committee and town council.
True.
And, and he has not been, well, he's a replaceable, really.
I mean, we can certainly reach out to the ledger and, you know, do a, a public, you know, announcement or something, a press release, we can certainly do a press release.
Point's well taken though.
Yeah, definitely.
Good one.
Very. Okay. Anything else on Sanborn before we move on? All right. Thank you all. Okay. So the, the next thing is a reminder of the superintendent finalists. So our public interviews are begin, I'm sorry, are on Monday the 13th. And we as a body need to come up with questions. And I know that the mayor had suggested in our last meeting is that we build off of the questions that were asked by the search committee. This is the format I anticipate. And then again, we need to come up with the questions. I don't think we're going to be able to come up with the questions tonight, but let's, we can talk about it at a high level. So I would suggest, you know, obviously the candidates, we have three, three interviews, 55 minutes each, back to back to back with a five minute break in between. We suggest, you know, that the, when the candidate comes that they introduce themselves, you know, why brain tree? I think, I know the mayor had, that was her question as part of the search committee. And then because we only have 55 minutes, I think a question per school committee member is probably enough. And I would probably ask the reps if they want to come up with a question as well for the superintendents. We all have to ask the exact same questions to each one of the, of the candidates. We can ask follow-up questions based on how they answer a question. And I think that there are certain categories or certain topics that we need to cover. It was suggested that we have a Zoom meeting perhaps on this Friday to come up with the actual questions. We'll, we'll post it and publish it. But I'll let other people interject, but I was thinking, you know, and again, building off of what the search committee did. You know, obviously budget experience, redistricting is a hot topic for us. Curriculum, special education, academic rigor and student achievement, what their transition plan would be, you know, how would they, how would they transition into brain tree? And then the student reps, those were my suggestions for topics, but I'll open it up to the committee for any other questions or comments. Dr. Orak.
I think safety in school continues to be utmost importance to parents and guardians. So I was thinking about a question related to not just physical safety, but like, you know, physical harm, but like also thinking about psychological safety and social emotional wellness and wellbeing. And then I think one of the things superintendent, the unique, you have to, the, the idea of, and leadership under very difficult circumstances and having to deliver unpleasant news can be very difficult. And I think that I'd like to hear about that, but those are two separate things. So if I were to prioritize, I think safe and social emotional well, well, be top of my list.
Ms. Tuffy.
So my questions have built off some of the questions that the search committee asked. The first one was on the evaluation cycle. What types of goals would the the candidate set for his formative evaluation cycle and most especially what goal? How would he address the decline in ELA's scores in middle, middle schools? And maybe give some examples of work they've done in the past to improve ELA performance. I also think building on the budget. What about? What's your experience in, in applying for and getting grants? And finally, I would like them to look at Braintree's strategic plan. And what changes or improvements would they make in that strategic plan?
And again, just because of the interest of time, we'll only have fifty-five minutes to interview each. And I also want to give them an opportunity for a quick closing statement as well. So just for follow-up, so this is going to happen on thirteenth. We need to have a meeting to go over the specific questions, make them public. The, the interviews are Monday and then Thursday, the sixteenth is when we'll actually vote. So we have school committee meetings on the thirteenth and on the sixteenth. The thirteenth is a town hall in the Cahill Auditorium. If anybody wants to join us, they're, feel free to join us. And then the sixteenth, we'll, we'll be back here for the actual vote. Any other questions or any other comments? Anybody else wants to add specific to questions?
Just in advance of, of the meeting, we have to talk about the actual questions that we select for the interview. I think one of the topics that we didn't have a lot of time to, to ask about during the initial interview and recommendation is sort of like technology in the school district, whether, and, and, and leaning towards AI as well. Like I think, you know, what their like view and philosophy, philosophy and just how, how they view technology in the schools, I think is something that's very important. I think screen time in the schools and use of technology. And I think we need to be applying that, you know, in all of our schools equally. And I don't know how well we do that. So I, I think just being very, at, at least show an awareness of it and maybe have some further recommendations on it. I would love to see a question like that.
Mr. Horak.
So in terms of the process for Friday, are we going to all basically come with a question or two that we want to ask and see where those fit into different buckets? Because we all, we need to have kind of a plan, at least for how we're gonna put this together. I mean, I would say the one thing from the actual search, like asking what, what's your plan in three months, six months without somebody being in it? That's a really like, I think we try to be as specific as we can about experience and kind of more general topics and not specific to Braintree. Cause I think it's really hard for a candidate to talk about what they're going to do before they're like here.
Oh, you're referring to my transition plan question.
You know, ultimately you're gonna get the, these canned answers that are kind of the same from everybody. I think like the, but for Friday, maybe we all just come up with one or two that we that's, yeah, feel good about it and then we can, everybody gets one and then kind of figure it out from there.
Okay.
Should we submit them in fans and fool them?
You, you, you can't.
Yeah.
Yes, we have to do it in a public meeting.
Send them.
We could send them.
Send them, you can send them to.
Send them to you and then at that meeting, we could have a collection of submitted and we can go.
You can do that.
Okay.
So by like Wednesday, submit those.
What time on Friday?
The time on Friday works for everybody.
Just a virtual.
Zoom meeting, yeah, just to finalize the questions.
If you were to submit all, everything by Wednesday, we could put it out in a binder to you. You just obviously can't communicate amongst one another, but you'd have all the questions added and then we could discuss it.
I have to be done by four thirty. I can start as early as needed.
As early as when?
As early as needed.
But she needs to be done by four thirty.
On Friday?
Right, which is scheduled like.
I can start early.
I can do it anytime on Friday. Just plan like my day accordingly.
This will be in person?
No, we're gonna choose a Zoom meeting.
Is it, it's recorded probably?
Yeah.
It would be.
A regular school committee meeting, yep. It's, it'll just be, well, it'll be virtual.
One, is that too early?
Can people do one?
Uh, that's fine.
Can you do one, Joe? I know you will work, Joe. You can.
Check my work calendar.
One would be okay with me.
Okay.
When you think, Cassie, it's fine.
All right, so one o'clock on Friday. Friday's date. One o'clock on the tenth, we'll finalize the questions. Okay. And by Wednesday, if everybody could send them to Mary Ann. Send the questions to Mary Ann, she'll.
We'll just compile.
Combine them all. We'll have them ahead of time and then we can go through them and decide.
You on Thursday.
And as a group.
Put them to the binder, you, you just get them.
Yeah. And as a group, we'll discuss them. In an open meeting, an open Zoom meeting on Friday. Okay, perfect. Excellent, thank you all for that.
Yes.
You guys too, so one question. You guys can pull your thoughts.
One student question.
Question, yeah. Okay, so moving into the student representative report. Who wants to go first, Ruby?
Yeah, um, good evening. So following the band and orchestra winter concert as well as the choral winter concert, tonight I wanted to discuss an issue that's been impacting an entire department of branch of schools, affecting both staff and students. This year marks my eighth year of band in the branch of public schools. And in those years, I don't think I've ever seen students taking less joy in their music due to their learning environment than I have in this academic year. While budget cuts have impacted everything in the department, the cost of music has been incredibly difficult as band as well as chorus have become unlevelled, forcing students of extremely varied skills from freshmen to seniors to share the same repertoire. We have upperclassmen who have been accepted into prestigious music ensembles, playing music with beginners to instruments and they're learning the same repertoire, which is a disservice to both that they're unable to perform to their abilities. Our department has found ways to adapt to the shortcomings offered to our ensembles, yet solutions often involve seniors losing much of their class time to instruct those who should have received this additional support in what was our concert band, our lower concert band. The comparison has been made that just as a math class would never not be leveled at this high of an education, much less a class consisting of every grade level at, at Braintree High School, a music class should follow the same guidelines. The quality of our music education at this time has taken a tremendous hit in the past years. And speaking to students and staff, they have echoed more of the same. Our music students deserve better. Thank you.
Good.
Hi, everyone, so happy new year. So today I just wanted to talk about some stuff that I'm doing in like the school regarding like clubs. So in the past month, we had our Model UN conference at St. John's Prep and that was extremely exciting and successful. So personally in my committee, there was like a lot of chaos because it was like about like a Israeli Palestine conflict, which is really like heated, but it was still successful though, like we were able to pass a good resolution. And, and then we basically had winter break, which is really relaxing for me. Like I spent time with like family and also like cramming in homework for classes. And also for science club, we have our first science Olympia at UMass Amherst on February fourteenth. So the topic that I'm doing is I have to research about like forensics and essentially there, like when you go, you have to take like a test. And the test for me is basically like, we have to like use like our knowledge that we've researched and then we're basically giving them the scenario. And we have like, we have basically have like a list of suspects and like, we have to like perform like a series of tests to kind of like figure out like who committed the crime. So that sounds like really interesting and fun. And then also like major exams are coming up in the next two weeks. So it's just like hectic.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I hope you had a good winter break and happy new year. My update today is going to be a bit brief. I was gonna start by talking about my winter break. I know for many seniors, including myself, we were mostly financing college applications and in the coming weeks, that process is going to start to wrap up. And then later this month, interact club officers are being invited to attend a lunch with the Rotary Club. And I was fortunate to attend this lunch last year. It was great and I'm looking forward to attending again. Also this month, ASA will be hosting their annual Lunar New Year Festival and it'll be taking place at the high school. And then as Marion said, with midterm exams starting on the twenty second, between studying and all extracurricular activities going on, there's a lot for VHS students to do this month.
Thanks. Can you explain to me the, the band? Like what's, is it due to the cuts?
Yeah, it was due to the cuts.
Due to the cuts, so we, did we used to have levels? Can you just explain what the changes?
Yeah, it's exactly what Ruby described. So previously we had staffing so that we broke out orchestra. And we had various levels of chorus and we had various levels of band. With the cuts, we consolidated. So it is truly as she described it, have mixed groups of kids all in one big band section as opposed to two smaller ones of varying abilities.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
We talked about the superintendent search question formation. And then moving on to policy and education. Ms. Tuffy.
Thank you. Policy initiatives subcommittee met on December sixteenth to review policies in section J, students and section K, community relations that were more than five years old. We voted to move five of those policies forward to the full committee for first reading. Policy JJ, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. We made some minor edits for clarification. Policy JJH dash R, the student travel policy was adopted in two thousand and four and the links were no longer valid. We've updated the links and added information about consultant, consulting the US State Department Travel Advisory website when planning international trips. BBA, parent communications policy was adopted in two thousand and eighteen and includes information about communicating with parents, guardians with limited English proficiency. Subcommittee made no changes to this policy, but we would like to note that it was reviewed in twenty twenty-five for record-keeping purposes. So BPS currently has a hundred and forty-six policies. And sixty-eight of those policies have been updated or added since twenty twenty-two. So just if there are no revisions to that, just a note that we've reviewed it, I think would be helpful. KE, public concerns was adopted in two thousand and seventeen. And again, we made minor updates for clarification. And finally, policy KS dash R, community use of school facilities, administrative procedures is no longer valid as the town controls the facilities department. And they set the rules and fees for the use of town property. Therefore, I move that policy KS dash R, including the building permit form, be removed from the BPS policy manual.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on policies? And I had one on, on the travel policy. So so the travel companies, have we ever had a, I know we've had a issue when in Iceland, there was a volcano erupting in Iceland and some trips to France in twenty-ten got canceled because my daughter was going to France. That's how I remember it specifically. So that was obviously, you know, due to weather. But do we get notified or how do, how would we get notified? And what is the timeline? Like, you know, if there was something that happened in a particular country or Europe or whatever? I guess I'm just, like, these are the, the level three or level four. So I guess I was just, how would this be communicated? Do we, has this ever happened before?
I cannot recall it. However, that said, the website that is linked in the new policy takes you to, in essence, all the countries and the state department ranks them one to four in terms of safety to travel. So the expectation would be if you were planning a trip to France, you would go to the site, make sure it's one or two. And if it was, you, you booked the trip. If it was three or four, you, you wouldn't book it or you'd have to have some kind of conversation. You, you wouldn't go to four. Timing is a unique thing though, right? So a volcano erupts tomorrow. A different scenario. It's not gonna be on the state department. We'd be working directly with the travel company about, how do we get our money out? How do we, you know, how do we schedule the trip or do something differently? So these are really, you know, when we talk about the state department website, we're talking about known issues that are ongoing. You can detect civil unrest in a variety of areas of the world. You can go today and the state department says, don't travel there.
Okay.
Travel there.
Okay. Okay. And I would agree that KFR should go to the town. And I know all streets and the mayor, but I know this was something that finance, I believe, director of finance was going over. This was something that's, that's has been moved to town hall. Mr. Horak.
I would just suggest that you do at least point people in the right direction because I do think people will go to the school policies to figure out renting. So even if this, like you want to remove that entire section, I would at least direct, like with explicit directions on where to find this information because I do think people would start up the school.
I think that could go on the school department website without being part of the policy manual. The policy manual is, as I said, has a hundred and forty-six policies. I, I don't think a whole lot of people read through those policies. But if there's a, if, if in the dropdown menu, uh, where there's a, a link to the town webs, the town, I think that would be sufficient.
Okay, I would agree. All right, so this is first reading. Are there any questions or comments before we move on?
I need a motion on to, to remove policy KS dash R because it's no longer valid.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, my Ms. Tuffy is second. Dr. Horak, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so we're removing that from the policies.
Our next meeting of the policy subcommittee will be January fourteenth at six-thirty here, over.
Thank you, Ms. Tuffy. Thank you to the continued work of the policy and education. I know you've done, they've done a ton of work since, in the last two years.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to finance and operations. So just a quick update and then we'll talk about the, the DESI categories. So we met on December sixteenth. Our next meeting is January fourteenth. I have it at five o'clock, is it five o'clock? If policy is at six-thirty, are we at five or five-thirty?
It's kind of, do you know, five or five-thirty?
I have it at five o'clock, is it five or five-thirty? That's okay, we can, we can clarify that. And then we just did a very high level preliminary budget. There were some watch items, transportation costs, the impact to the athletic fees, the impact of FY cuts to professional development and direct to supply budgets that we need to, some of these things that we need to revisit. And then obviously the kindergarten registration is coming up, so we're watching for the kindergarten membership. Those that we need to, to consider, which is the BEA contract negotiations, which are beginning next month. And then the sped out of district placement is always a concern. And then other things to, that we need to consider of the cost savings, potential cost savings is retirement and obviously the outcome of whatever the elementary study project, the Sanborn recommendations. And then so that very high level, what we did. And then we're going to continue on the twenty-seventh and I think we're, we're presenting something on the twenty-seventh for the budget. Is that the first? That's our plan. That's our first pass in open meeting, in this open meeting. And then back to the DESI category. So back on November, and our November meeting, I think it was November twentieth, the subcommittee voted three to zero to move this forward with favorable action to the full committee. So I don't know, Mr. Lee, you want to give us a high level or?
I do not, however, I'll be far more.
Finance would like to do that.
Elegant than I am is going to.
Please. Pass through this, please.
So you, like Jim, so these are the articles that we have historically used to present the budget to this committee and the school committee votes on like each article on its own. These are not wildly differ from the DESI function code. They are unique to Braintree. So this is, these categories are used and were created by a previous administration in Braintree. So our proposal is to use articles to the DESI function codes the next. So these are the DESI codes, they're just similar. However, the categories are similar, but those are used in many other districts and they're used by DESI for the end of year report that we have to file every year. And they're also used on DESI's data website where you can kind of easily pull up different districts and see what their expenditures look like across these categories. And that's why I think that this is probably advantageous over the articles, although they're not super different in how they would and how they would present for the committee and for the public.
Thanks.
Yeah, you can. I mean, does anybody have any question or do you guys want to read these or?
Do them at the end?
Yeah, sure. So these are just snapshots. So the first snapshot is the end of year report. This is something that my office fills out and files. We just finished it for, um. FY twenty-four and it was submitted this year, but we have to do that every year and this uses those DESI function codes. And asks for us to, um, report our annual expenditures in the categories. Um, and then the second snapshot, I know it's hard to see, but just gives you an example of the reporting that is readily available. On the DESI website for any district that we might want to pull up, including our own. Um, so you can see like year to year, you can see across districts, you can choose, um. Like a group of districts if you would want to make comparisons and I think that that can be useful. Um, so for example, the company ERS that came in in the summer and did the consulting project for us, used the DESI function codes. Um, to do the financial part of that consulting report and it is commonly. Um, in other districts. And when I did a little bit of research on different websites to see how other towns were putting their budgets together. It seems like most of them were either using DESI codes or they were doing it by cost center, which a lot of towns were doing it like by school. We don't. Look at it by school. Um, we tend to look at it more by subject area, but so we had the articles. And those are not. Comparable to other districts if you wanted to just compare apples to apples, but the DESI function code you can use to compare. Apples to apples across other districts, um. Any questions? Is there one more slide, Jim?
Yes.
Already probably.
Yeah, you spoke to those, I think.
Pretty standard.
And we also discussed as a Subcommittee that we were requesting our Director of Finance to take the FY twenty-five. Articles that we voted on and to break them down into the categories if the, if the community decides we should go this route. To break it down for FY twenty-five and then we would go forward with FY twenty-six. Um, and then new format as well, so that we can easily refer back to FY twenty-five in the, in the categories versus. Um, articles.
Yes, yes. And so, and so this is, um. How our chart of accounts has been built, like in munis with the DESI function codes and the object. Code, so this is, this is no change in how we're doing anything. It's just really simply a difference in how we're presenting the budget for vote every spring.
So it's just mapping the data from an article to a category. Ms. Fogarty, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, you sort of answered it, but I was just wondering about the, the current chart of accounts. Uh, could you just talk a little bit about what that, or what is the chart of accounts and, and how does it use the budget codes? Like, how is that translated from the articles to the budget codes?
Sure, so our budget has something like five hundred lines. Um, we do roll it up by department, so like special education, for example, is a department, um, like central office would be a department, school committee has its own department. But the DESI function co- codes are. Like four digits that sit within like a string of numbers. So they're like the fourth through eighth numbers or something in a string. In the budget, so like every budget line has a string of numbers and the DESI function codes are included. String of numbers.
So every budget line has to be ascribed like, like categorized as one of these budget codes.
Yeah, exactly. So it's already there. So that's why this isn't really like a big change. It's just a change in the presentation.
And so then we would vote on the categories instead of the. We would no longer be doing it the way we did it.
Ultimately, as opposed to what the committee has been doing in terms of voting the articles and then the total. You'd be voting the DESI function codes in the total.
So that would be the change. Any other questions or? Dr. Horak?
I guess. It, it seems to me like it's a no brainer because we can. Directly compare to other districts and learn through the process, right? I guess, can you talk a little bit more about why Braintree has done the budget this way for so long? It seems a little bit wasteful because you have to put it in the DESI already. I'm really confused as to why.
Previous and, oh, previous administration.
The articles have been here as long as I've been.
Had, had done it that way and there was never any discussion to change it the other way. So that was just the way it.
It brings you away.
Historically, that's the way it was done. Um, so there. I don't want to say there's no rhyme or reason because I'm sure there was, but this, for all the reasons you just said, is a no brainer. This makes. Much more sense and I think we should move this, move towards this, so.
I think it's great. Um, um, what about athletics? Where does athletics fit within the DESI categories?
There's one called. Pupil services, I think, Jim, if you want to go up two sides.
I see other school services.
Um, yeah, maybe it's other schools. No, that, yeah, there's one called pupil services that incorporates like school nurses, transportation, food services, athletics. Security extracurriculars. Um, and all of this information is also available on the DESI website. There's like a Word. Document that you can download that gives a little bit more information. This is shortened so that it fit onto the slide, but.
It's listed differently here, that's why.
Wait, what?
It says other school services.
Oh, yeah, the, um, actually the materials we got from UMass had like. Been worded slightly differently than what's on the DESI website, but. So this is how it's.
Comparing this to, to what we have here? Because, is it? The pupil services is not on our list in front of what's in.
Yeah, I think it was on other, other school services.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think this would make the budgeting process more informative, um, and, and really help this body make decisions and. Um, I, I, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just noticed that some of the. Sorry, uh, some of the categories say this, uh, cost in town budget, like insurance costs. Town is costing town budget, so that would not. I guess. I mean, if, if, I, I just wonder if you could talk about that. I, I understand that the facilities department is, falls under the town. Uh, budget, but. Why is, is it listed, the DESI code is being. On the town budget? Does that mean that you would then have to reflect it in the Destiny?
That's a note that I've put in there, so for, like, when we. Present and vote for our seventy-nine point five million dollar budget for this year. It doesn't include the facilities costs that sit on the town side. However, when we submit our end of year report to DESI. Um, we get that information from the town about what facilities expenditures were allocated to the schools, like the custodial and maintenance and things like that. And those are considered by DESI to be part of our school budget, so similar with insurance costs, like health insurance costs. Don't sit in our budget either. Um, but they are still costs associated with the school. So when you. So when we file the end of year report, we just get the information from the town and, and we fill in, um. Those types of expenditures, even though they're not part of the budget that we manage.
And we would not be voting on those.
Right.
We would only be voting on anything that truly falls under operations and maintenance for the schools. Which is what you. Utilities, technology. What do we, what do we have?
Well, we have. Technology facilities resides on the town side, uh, uh, health insurance on the town side. There are a number of benefits that are on the town side.
Then it's your question, Ms. Fogarty?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion that we will move to the, the DESI categories from our, um, our Braintree articles?
Still moved.
Oh. Ms. Fogarty for discussion, go ahead.
I, I, I would vote no on the, just on the grounds that I haven't. I, I. My understanding is like we, this is being presented for the first time. So on my first glance, it seems like a great idea. Person I would want to think about a little more, maybe vote on it at the next meeting.
I would second the motion.
So I have a motion to approve. And I have a second.
So I'll, I'll move to table.
I think we have to vote on the first.
I think we have to vote on the, right.
You can have discussion after you get the motion and then you have to take them.
So a motion by Dr. Horak and a second by Mr. Rolo. And then for discussion. So. You're suggesting that we. Do, do you have other questions? I mean.
I, I don't, or not this time.
Okay.
I feel like this, this has. The benefit of this is that we can compare Braintree. Other districts more easily and, uh. Uh. It seems like. Right now, um, our finance. Director is doing an extra step that's necessary. It seems like you're doing it twice once with the. Categories that, uh, were developed. In a different administration. And then again to, uh, to the DESI codes, so I, I, I. I think it makes sense to just. Uh, go ahead and approve this tonight.
Do you call for a vote?
Yeah. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, no. Point of order, if I make a motion to table, is this supposed to be voted on? Before the vote on the main motion? And maybe it wasn't seconded. I know it wasn't seconded.
Well, it's seconded. We had a motion to approve. To approve.
Sub motion, her motion was seconded by Justin.
Yes.
And then a point of clarification.
Right.
I don't know, and I don't know offhand, um, whether or not if a member calls to table it, that doesn't. He has Robert's rules in their pocket.
What we got that wasn't seconded, I mean, so. It's already dead and you guys voted.
Okay, so it passes.
It passed.
It's passed. That's one.
Back review, but.
Alright, um, okay, so our next meeting, that's the end of our agenda. So our next meeting, as we said, is Friday, the tenth at one o'clock. Um, to finalize the questions for. Uh, Superintendent Candidate interviews, which will again occur on Monday, the thirteenth. At six thirty at Town Hall. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Horak.
Second.
So I'm, I'm Mr. Tuffy. Ms. Fogarty.
Aye.
Sir Rolo. Mayor Joyce.
Aye.
Dr. Horak.
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned, thank you.